He's not here.
Where's John?
I am not John's keeper. Well, we've got enough people to start, so.
Okay.
Six forty-five. We'll open the public hearing for the Shandaken Inn.
No.
No.
The order is actually subdivision first, public hearing.
I have that backwards.
Yeah.
All right, disregard that. Are you all set, Tom? The seller?
Yeah.
Okay, we will open subdivision for...
Do we need to read the letter?
Yes, please.
The letter? The notice.
Yeah.
Good. We do attend in.
Yes, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Cliff Abubuo.
Yes.
Art Griskey.
Yes.
Joanne Howe.
Present.
Joanne, John Horn. Alan Scheiner.
Present.
Sam Scotta.
Here.
Vivian Wollman.
Present.
So, the letter was sent on January eighth and put in the Freeman. Notice hereby given that the town of Shandaken planning board will hold a public hearing pursuant to section two seventy-four A and or section two seventy-six of state law and as prescribed in district schedule of area bulk regulations of the Shandaken town code with purpose of hearing for the following applicant. Regarding a subdivision for the applicant Eric Salmerin for a parcel located at the south side of Route twenty-eight and Golf Course Road indicated as SPL number five point seventeen dash one dash one located on residential tunnel zone one point five. Alex Salmerin that is applying for subdivision in order to make two lots. The public hearing is scheduled now. Ms. Vivian, do you have comments in the audience that would like to speak? Just wait.
So, the map is exactly the same map that you saw last month.
The only change, yeah, I lost it here. The only change is I labeled these roads. They were showing us driveways that are actually town roads, so I just labeled those. That was the only change we made. There was some discussion, the owner had actually talked to Rex Sanford about doing some soil tests on his property. But due to the site conditions with the snow and the winter where we are. If you guys are gonna require, I mean, it's one and a half acre zoning. It's a twenty acre lot and a thirty acre lot. If you're gonna insist that we do soils, which I mean, it's your property, if you want to do that. I would ask tonight a motion for final approval contingent on getting a soil test. When I read the regs today, it looks like we've got one hundred and sixty or one hundred and eighty days where if we've got a final approval contingent on getting the soil done when the site conditions dry out and thaw out. If the board thought that that was an approving way to go, I would ask for that at the end of the public hearing.
I have a question. Did we discuss that they are going to be building on these lots?
Well, they're gonna be for sale.
Uh huh.
So, you know, somebody might build a residence, somebody might use it as a hunting lot. The board has stayed in the back and sort of, you know, assigned fair assignment and surveying. So, I think we have to assume that the lot should be buildable and should have, people should have the ability to build a residence on, whether it be camp or structure.
All right, but I don't think that's required by us.
No.
No, so it's not required by us.
Okay.
That's why I was asking.
Not at this point.
Not at this point.
If they, if they go further, Rob, you know, then they would be subdivided again.
Right.
They would build a house on it.
With the si- yeah, with the size of these, it's not a concern. That they'll be able to find a buildable location.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you were splitting them down to one point five, that might be a different story.
Here, the lot size is a lot, you know, compared to the zoning. An acre and a half is only a twenty acre lot, thirty acre lot, so it would be sufficient.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the ordinary audience that would like to speak about this? No? Okay.
I'll make a motion that due to the property being R one point five and two lots, thirty acres and twenty acres. I don't see any issue in approving this now on the condition that Rex Sanford or whoever the engineer is on this one, I think it was Rex, I remember last time. Will have the engineering drawings for the septic.
No condition.
No condition.
Well, are we at the septic stage yet? I don't think so.
Two other things I need to tell you guys. That was just in the public hearing.
What's that?
I just said, I thought we were in the public hearing.
We are, right.
Just wanna give you two more comments. There is an affirmed logging permit on the property that was issued by our office and located and everything was...
Right, we asked about that last time.
And DOT and I have been in contact too about the access road that was given, it was, the permission was given. There will be... There will be a little bit more, I think. I think we just have to check in with the DOT's permit for the subdivision. Now, was it, now it's going to be a subdivision, just to make sure that it's okay.
The DOT?
Yeah, John Riley. Do you know him?
So, um...
Because that access is on twenty-eight.
Like, the driveway?
Sorry.
The driveway's been there for a long time.
It has.
I think that driveway was constructed when they put that, the power line in.
It was. And then it was allowed, that he gave permission for the logging to permit more. But now that it's being subdivided and that's the access, we just have to just...
So, there's only one road going to two parcels?
Yes.
Yeah.
But is that gonna go into the two parcels? I thought it was going into the two parcels.
Yeah, what we did is we used the center line of the driveway as the property line so they can both use that access point.
I, I was suggesting you have it as also conditioned to make sure the permit's okay by the DOT for access to twenty-eight. Because it was verbally permitted for logging. But now this parcel, it doesn't have to refer to county and that, it's just, it's DOT permit to access the property.
So, the DOT gave this permit for the logging?
He didn't give a permit, he gave a verbal permission.
Oh, he gave permission, oh.
But now, we're giving permission as a town. If we do to subdivide, then we should just make sure it's cohesive with the DOT's permit as well. If there, it may not even be, but I did talk to Riley, a DOT, because I was trying to find this logging permit.
Should we have at this point in time, a agreement, a road agreement, private road agreement between the two parcels?
No.
That's usually not us.
Why, we did that with, we did that with, uh, uh, a few months ago. Where she, she came in with the subdivision and with private road agreement.
So, if I could just claim, it's only for the first hundred feet of where we come onto the property. So, you have the road bounds and you're actually under the high line and the, you're saying like...
Right, but when you come in, that's a...
There's a reciprocal easement in the deed, right, where each party will have a right of way across the other part because you're on the center. And that reciprocal easement will allow each party to use the road on each other's property.
Right, but who's gonna pay for snow removal on that part?
The property, I, I mean, other than private road in middle town, what we do is we get together and share, we share that.
I see, a maintenance agreement.
There should gonna be, I think there should be an agreement between the two owners.
Right.
Well, you said there's a right of way. You put a line down the middle, each one has a right of way.
You said we create it, since we use the common road for both lots. We're creating a right of way and we show that on the drawing. And we show that it's a fifty foot wide right of way, there's a label right on the drawing.
Well, if they sell one.
Owners can come in and use that road.
Right.
And I think we can add that to the deed.
Yes.
You know, that there's a fifty foot wide right of way.
Right, but there should be, it should be written so that there's a whole thing laid out as to sharing the cost of snow removal.
You mean, there needs to be an agreement?
And a maintenance agreement should be in the deed.
But right...
Absolutely, agree in the deed and each one will have that right and they'll share the maintenance and the snow removal and that, that'll be a statement in the deed. The problem with that stuff is enforcement. You know, you can write whatever you want in the deed, but to try to enforce it ten years from now, it just makes a problematic.
It's easier to enforce if there's an agreement.
If it's not there is where you see...
But right now, there are not two owners, there's one owner.
It is, that is the thing, is...
There's one owner.
It was so...
There's one owner, but you put it in so that this parcel owned, and it, even though they're the same person now, you have to have the agreement.
So, what I would suggest, sir, is I'll prepare a schedule A for each lot and I'll give it to the town. And basically, they'll describe that right of way and it'll describe the share and maintenance of that roadway. And that'll be on file with the town and that is what will convey the land. So, that gets a filed document.
Okay, that's okay.
And if this comes to us later on for more subdivision, then we could put a road maintenance agreement. It's usually three lots or more. The road maintenance agreement.
Well, yeah, it gets a new hap- yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, schedule A, sorry, I just wanted to confirm that the logging permit was on file and then I did talk to the DOT because the access is to twenty-eight and there was, the width of the property to look and there, there was access. So, I just wanted to make sure that everything was good before you're letting somebody subdivide that, you know, that was all.
Well, that's, it's for your protection when you go to sell the property.
Yeah.
So, do they not have a legal curb cut right now? Is that the concern?
There was nothing wrong with...
It is existing.
Yeah, and it was existing, it was for the power lines and then he allowed, okayed it for the logging. And then, yes, there would be, we just need to, I, I don't know, I'm not making a decision, but to condition that the DOT permit, if necessarily, be intact, that's all. The issue, if it needs, if it needs be by the DOT. I can give the Riley's number, his permit guy, the DOT, you know? Yeah, I just think that was just...
I don't think we need it.
It seems like they have access already.
Right, they already have access.
But there's no...
It's something that's existing.
It's existing, pre-existing.
Okay. There now, so, okay, so that was the two comments, sorry, all right.
Again, with all, and it's only two very large lots. If this becomes like a roadway leading to other lots, things could, that could definitely weigh on...
Yeah.
If anybody through the subdivisions does anything else, then is there gonna be a road maintenance agreement? There's gonna be a lot of other things involved.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Now, you can go on with your motion.
No, okay.
As far, as far as...
Well, I forgot what I said the first time.
No, no, you had, that was the time to stop him. Yes, we do.
Myself, both of you, both public hearing.
Second.
Oh, David.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Are we, I, I'm sorry, we just, are we going to the next public hearing and then to our regular monthly meeting to re-discuss prior, or are you wanting to discuss it now?
Yeah. We just did.
No, you should make the motion when we end up regularly.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one with the, with the lot of provisions.
We'll reduce it, you have our next public hearing.
Okay.
So, um, do we need to do the roll call in attendance for the next one? By law?
Should be noted, yeah.
I don't think so.
All right.
Nobody left.
It's recorded here.
Yeah.
Okay. Notice hereby given that the town of Shandaken planning board will hold a site plan review, special permit, public hearing. Sorry, pursuant to seven, two seven four A and zoning law sections one sixteen dash five oh one and one sixteen dash forty-two as prescribed in district schedule of area bulk regulations of the Shandaken town code with purpose hearing of the following applicant. Regarding a site plan review, special permit amendment application by the Shandaken Inn parcel located at eighteen dash thirty lower Golf Course Road, Shandaken, New York, further indicated as SPL four point two zero dash one dash twenty-three located in residential one point five. An application for special use permit site plan amendment approved dated September eighth, two thousand twenty-one was submitted to the Board of Shandaken Inn for construction of four new cabins with accompanying parking and a new spa and site renovations that include new roadway, parking, landscaping, utility, stormwater management and septic facilities allowable within zoning. This project was under secret review with the planning board of Shandaken acting as lead agent. The project received a negative declaration of unlisted action by resolution, resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one on January twelfth, twenty, two thousand twenty-two, what year? I don't know, you don't understand. Okay. And if, the, the project is up here on the map, if anyone would like to look at it. And if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to come up now too.
Okay, can I speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, let us know who you are.
Yeah, what's your name?
I'm Don Freeman, Golf Freeman.
And what's your address?
Thirty-seven Lower Golf Course Road.
Okay.
Remind this town that this Golf Course Road is the only road that we take to get to Arlene.
We can do a line, sorry, this is the, that's like, here.
I think, uh...
And I can hold up before you know it. Go ahead, sorry.
I mean, I moved into, moved into our house when the Shandaken Inn was, was, was just, you know, a building, a brick building and it wasn't, it wasn't the Shandaken Inn as it is now. So, they have already, you know, done a lot of construction in the last couple of years. They, they've cut down like huge trees, put in lighting, huge lighting. It, it, everything they do is affecting the neighbors, me, John, everybody on the other, you know, road that leads up to the end of the property. And the traffic is really bad now. There's delivery trucks, you know, this huge delivery trucks coming in, people parking and obviously, they built a, they built a big garbage bin right at the end of the road, which was where the, the snow was being plowed and that was where the snow went. So, the, the, the main thing is for me, because I like to hike and I like to hike on the railroad track. They, they covered it up with, you know, like, three hundred pounds of gravel and soil, which I don't know if they can do that because it's not their property. So, it affected me because I like to take hikes. So, there, 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 there was this huge pile of ground, you know, dirt covering the railroad track. I also walk a little bit up the road with my dogs where the cabins are now proposed. And then there's that house, which is on the end of the hill. And there's beautiful woodland area and there's like a pond. I just don't see how they're gonna get all those people into the cabins and to the spa by continuing to use Golf Course Road. And I was in, under the impression that they were gonna build another access road, you know, here, which would seem to make the only sense. Because if there's gonna be increased traffic already on Golf Course Road, which I, I really feel like it's reached its max, you know, with delivery, food delivery trucks and people. And now they're gonna want more people to come on that road and then continue along the, the river up to the cabins and then the spa. So, I mean, I just, that's my main complaint, is I don't want them, I don't want all that traffic on Lower Golf Course Road. They're already going fast, there, there's so many more cars than there used to be, you know, and this is our only road that we have to access our house. Other than that, there's their disregard for the, the railroad track. They put signs on railroad tracks saying swimming hole, which is a private swimming hole that fishermen use. They put a big sign, obviously, they're telling their guests that there's a swimming hole on, on the sappus, which is lea- is not legal for them to swim there. You know, so I just, I just wanna make sure that they're doing the right thing, you know, with, with the environment especially. But I definitely think they need an access road to, to the back of where the spas are. There's all that traffic, increased traffic coming up Lower Golf Course Road is just, uh, it's gonna not be very good to live near there, you know. Anyway, John, would you wanna say anything?
Well, basically what my neighbor says.
Come on up, though, what's your name?
Of course.
You can use the mic.
I dressed up.
Fifteen Lower Golf Course Road. It's directly across from the Shandaken Inn. Their access to their parking lot is almost directly across from my driveway, which makes problems. The innkeeper is very accepting of my suggestions. They've put slow down signs on the road. Apparently, nobody reads because they still do forty-five, fifty miles an hour up and down the road. I risk my life going out to get my mail from my mailbox. On Thursdays, I've counted at one point eight delivery trucks up and down the road in one day. And some of those are eighteen wheeled, full-size tractor trailers that can't even negotiate backing into the inn. And as Don said, if they put an alternate entrance in for the new construction area for the cabins and the spa, if they could use that as a delivery entrance, bringing the trucks in through the back, alleviating that additional traffic on Golf Course Road, which as Don says, is almost unsustainable at this point. The road is starting to deteriorate from the traffic. The other thing is during the construction of this, if all the construction and contracting vehicles are going up and down Golf Course Road, it's just gonna be a, we suffered almost over a year of that to begin with when they built the inn. And now it will be all over again. And this, this road is being used as a private entrance to the Shandaken Inn, where I believe it is a town road. And if they made an alternate entrance, which would be east of Lower Golf Course Road and they put the majority of the traffic into that way, I wouldn't have a problem with this project though, not at all. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else on the panel who wants to speak? Oh, yeah, we didn't mention that. We're a little concerned about the aquifer and, and our wells also. I do know for a fact that the Shandaken Inn has a flush system on their water treatment that uses hundreds, if not thousands, of gallons every time it flushes itself. So, I mean, if our wells go down, then we've got another expenditure.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, let me ask a question. Doug, where you and your neighbor suggested bringing the road in on the eastern end of that property? How does that approach you, twenty-eight? Does it drop off?
Well, they have to build it, but there is...
There's an old entrance, I believe, used for the Magiani property. It's been there since I moved here.
I've seen it, I've seen that entrance.
Wait, do you want, maybe, would you like to?
Is that...
There is an existing driveway.
Yes.
Like, so that's right to the, to the home as on the eastern side.
Could you please speak into the microphone? I'm having a little trouble hearing.
Take the mic.
So, there's an existing driveway on the eastern side of the property that goes into the existing residence that remains over there. Previously, it was, it, it still is on a separate lot, but they're consolidating the lot, so it will be one part of the property. We obviously have not, that wasn't part of the proposal, the owners had not recommended that be done. The only thing is that it, since the site already has access off the town road, municipal road with DOT typically with the limited access from a state highway, there's no guarantee that they would be allowed to access from the highway directly. And that's not, that's not part of this application to utilize that to access the site. And currently, it's rarely used at all to either come and go. And actually, the neighboring property to the east, they don't have a right of way over there or anything, but they use that access to get into their property.
And that's with the permission of the Shandaken Inn?
Yes, it's, uh, it's a little contentious right now, but the Shandaken Inn does allow them to use it.
Do they have another access if that one was not working?
The neighbors? Um, I, I don't know, I would have to look at it, I really didn't get involved. Surveyor kinda did the research in the deeds and the easements and things like that. And we just know that there was no, there's never been an easement over that driveway conveyed to the neighboring property.
But it is a usable driveway.
It is a usable driveway.
Isn't there two driveways there? One goes to those two little houses and then there's one west of that that used to go into the Magiani property.
It goes past the Magiani property, goes through the field that they're building the cabins, and then it goes down to the river and then ends up in the parking lot.
The one. Right, the one, access.
So, it's already accessible by the house that I believe is owned by the Shandaken Inn. So, why can't they use that road?
It would be great for the delivery.
No, it's already, it's a, it's a driveway, so it is, is not, it's not a road, we'll just be clear about that. It is only a driveway. So, um, and the main access to the Shandaken is, as they said, is from Lower Golf Course Road.
Well, would it be a stretch for the Shandaken Inn to make that a usable road?
Um, you know, I can't really comment on what that is. I know right now it's just, it's very limited, I don't even know what the site, I've never pulled in and out of it myself. I come in through Lower Golf Course, through the main access. Of course, I've been on that driveway, as you know, we proposed to widen it to be a road because it's barely ten feet wide as it stands. Um, I do know that it crosses the water course there and, um, that would be very limited crossing at this point as far as vehicles. So, it would be substantial to gain access. And it's kind of, um, those buildings and things there, I would say, is more back of house than, you know, the main entrance to the facility. And to come in there and weight binding to get to the, the main event, the hotel and the restaurant is, um, is not ideal.
So, there is a water course there?
There is, yeah. Actually, do you want, I'm gonna share you on here?
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Yeah, there's one of them. So, this is the, the driveway here that's at the edge of the property. And, um, this is that water course that goes all the way from the pond, it goes all through the site and through here. And there's two small culverts that go out. And, um, this does continue there and it's kind of just like all gravel in here because it barely, it barely connects. It's just kind of, they don't really utilize that driveway at all. And then the neighbor on this side comes in.
So, is it, do you point up again to the highway?
Yeah.
All right, oh, that's short. What does that connect to?
Yeah, there's some gravel in here and the, the neighbor has some gravel and there's some gravel that kinda goes over here, but they don't...
Goes down like that?
Yeah, it does, it just, you know, it almost dissipates because they, they use it, but it's not really constructed. It is constructed here, but then through here, there's just kind of, it's almost like dirt, you know, they just drive on it type thing.
Now, this here, what is this? This is a road?
This is a, like, a ten foot wide driveway. Through here, this is paved to here and then there's a gravel portion. And then there is the gravel that's on, and it's that, they're gonna remove, so you know.
Yeah, that is gonna be removed.
And...
Yeah.
So, we're proposing that they widen this. At some point through here, it goes back to like a blacktop surface and they're gonna widen this to get to here. And this, this tree road kind of buffers from this, all that kind of, almost like fertility type...
And that's where the house is, you know?
That's the house, yeah, one, they, one worker stays in the house, most of the garage they use for some storage. Most of the garage they use for some storage there. But this is all, you know, um, open field.
Yeah.
With some, some trees here, and then this is another field section. And this is all pretty level through here. And then it drops off on this side of the road, and it drops off on this side of the tree line.
Well, that's the setbacks now. Would it be possible to bring this road in and, and call it that and connect it?
You know, I, I, again, we did not look into it. We did not review that as part of the feasibility for this. Um, it was always, you know, to come in here, they can check in, they can get to their, you know.
Well, maybe.
So we never looked into improving it, because this is very close, um, to the house here. And these are very small culvert, these are barely ten feet wide.
What are, what are these little things?
Culverts.
All these are culverts. Like I said, I did not drive in that way. I did not drive my car into that pit.
So that's too bad, because this could be used just for utilities.
For deliveries.
Yes, yes. Well, if, if not the culverts here and here, I mean, there's.
Yeah, but it would be the same problem. Because even if they brought the deliveries in this way, they're bringing the deliveries to here, to the main building. They're not bringing deliveries to the, the cabins.
But they're doing construction here?
That's where the cabins are going to be.
Yeah, so it's going to be new construction.
Yeah.
And here as well, this is.
This is going to be the sector, this is the spa, straight off the pool. And, um, potentially there would be another cabin down the hill off of where the, of the parking lot is, behind the tennis court. And the town road does end at some point, and then the, the golf course road, this isn't, this is kind of more, this is a private entrance from here.
But these two gentlemen, they're here, they're right here.
They are right there, yes. And this property does own this small piece on the other side of the road as well. So I'm sure that's where they're referring to as far as having, um, the dumpster.
Oh. Yeah, so that's right by that.
So that's what he was saying, that they, they used to plow the snow over to there.
To there, right.
But nothing had.
But it's their property.
Yeah.
Yeah, they could do whatever they want on it.
You can't see our way. Our road is not on that map, but our road is a private road that goes to the.
And I've been down there. I've been down and around in the back there.
So, I mean, already there's been some issues with.
Stormwater.
The, the water, and they were kind enough to fill in the, the ditch that they used to, to put all the elec- all the electrical wires, you know, so that, that, it's a hill, so everything just kind of goes down there. He's got to worry about the water in his yard, and then we have to worry about making it to our house. So that, that, where the, where the, where the, where they put the garbage, um, thing, it's a real active circle right there. People are coming out, people are coming in, you know. Uh, it's a lot of activity right there, and we're just trying to get to our house, he's trying to get to his house. It's the deliveries that are really, you know.
Yeah, you know, I invite anyone to come and sit for a day and look out my kitchen window and watch trucks go back and forth.
Your house is, you go past Doug's, you turn left, then there's John Pedersen.
Right, an accident.
Right, yeah. And then there's your house at the end.
At the end. There used to be Heidi and, um.
West.
And west, yeah. That's the house I was in.
At the very end. But people walk up, you know, I mean, people walk up there looking for the swimming hole. You know, so there are, there are activities, you know, beyond the fact that they, they just go up that road now a lot. Indian cars. So, yeah, you know, the, it's that, it's that circle at the end of the road there that's, that's really congested.
And it's getting in, in and out of our driveway.
All this little lower golf course road is going to handle all that new activity unless they.
It's basically turned into a private entrance to the Shandaken Inn. Simple as that. Not a town road anymore.
I mean, upper golf course road is, you know, they have nice houses along the side of their road, but we have the Shandaken Inn.
It's also a parking area there on the town road to the inn. Back against the quick van on the railroad track.
Oh, right, so I, I'll comment to the board. We did talk about this, um, at the last meeting, because the Cat- Ulster County has already commented, because it's their property, uh, that this encroaches on their property and the railroad tracks. And it is, uh, obviously slated and required to be removed. So, um, with, you know, relevant to this application, that will be removed. And, um, the plans have been revised to indicate that. The owner's aware of it. They're, you know, uh, waiting for the weather so that they can deal with that. Um, it's difficult to comment on the, the portion of this that's existing. Um, so just related to what this application is and for the cabins, um, the storm water will be, uh, a slip has to be prepared for the DEP to review. Uh, related to the new impervious areas, they are, um, more removed from the homeowners. They're in a different location on the site. The storm water will be directed in a different way. Um, as not to definitely impact everything that's happening on that side of lower golf course road. Um, but, um, related to the traffic of, of the existing facility, we're not prepared to address that at, at this time.
Okay.
So, the floor.
Sorry?
You guys want to close the public hearing? Go to your.
Any further comments from the public before we close the public hearing?
Just, just, I've been to a lot of, I've been to a lot of resorts and a lot of, you know, places and casinos. They're, they all have roads that come in and go out. You know, it's like, the fact that everybody has to come in, the cabins, the spa, and then turn around and go back out, it seems like it's also dangerous, you know? When they have a road right there, and everybody's using it now. There's trucks and the employees and people that live in that house, the Mag- what's it, Maggie Road?
Yeah, Maggiani.
Maggiani's house, there's a whole staff of people that use that road. Huge trucks, uh, bulldozers. I mean, there's tons of traffic on that road. So it's not like it's some, it sounds like it's some ten-foot road that nobody uses. People are using it a lot. So I don't see why they can't just keep going and get, end up on twenty-eight. And that way trucks can come in. I don't know, it just seems like, what if, what if the inn was on fire? They all have to go out one way, you know? It just seems really dangerous, so we have one. Yeah, it's a lot of.
Yeah. That's, are you referring to the road over here?
Right, he wants it to connect and go out that way.
And you've seen bulldozers and tractor trailers?
I've seen, there's, there's one part that's going in there.
On the golf course road?
Bulldozers, no. On the old road that goes up to the house.
What did, what?
Not holding, what do they call those?
I haven't seen anything.
Cars, I'm just saying they're using it quite a lot.
Right, and we've used it to access, I'm just saying, we've never come in up a twenty-eight and crossed over that water course yet to.
Water course.
Golf course all the way to there.
I don't see problems with water course. I put a culvert under my driveway out of necessity, thirty-six inch culvert under my driveway. It's ten thousand dollars to have it installed. I had to do it. You can, water courses are not always protected. Mine wasn't. It dries up one time a year or twice a year. If you're going to build roads, a culvert is not a big deal. And as Don said, if I was staying on the inn, I wouldn't want to see the luxury cars.
Nice.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is it, will we have an opportunity for continued discussion after we close the public hearing to consider what we've heard?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. So can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, can we join, and we can start our big, um, meeting?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
Okay, ready?
Yeah.
Everyone rise for the pledge.
I fell off.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cliff and Rick Bell?
Good.
Art Christie? Joyin Cow?
I'm still here.
John Horn? Alan Shiner?
Yep.
Sam Spada?
Here.
Vivian Welton?
Did everyone have a chance to review?
A minute, yes.
I move the minutes to be accepted?
Second.
All in favor? So, of business, you can, you can talk about subdivision?
Yeah, we'll start with Solomon. I don't think we needed anything from the DOT. We don't, we all are in agreement that we don't need to see soil samples on lots that large.
Correct.
Uh, and the same thing as far as the, uh, uh, maintenance agreement. Again, it's just two lots, uh, we're splitting it fifty-fifty.
Do you want to go over the compact EAF? Is the application still in your, um, files from when you met with them?
I still have it.
Okay. The EAF is the third page.
Yeah, I have part one.
It is not, I can just, whatever you want, read it aloud if someone doesn't have it. It should be still attached to the application.
If you read it aloud, then it'll be in the minutes.
Great. Number one, does the proposed action only involve legislative adopted of a plan, local law, ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? No. Does the proposed action require permit approval or funding from any other government agency?
No.
No. Number three, total acreage fifty-nine point eight-one. Part B, total acreage to be physically disturbed, zero. Part C, total acreage, product site and any contingent, contiguous properties owned or controlled by the applicant or product sponsor, fifty-nine point eight-one. Number four, check all land uses that occur on or adjoining or near the proposed action. Number five, forest, rural, non-ag. Number five, is the proposed action a permitted use under zoning regulation? Yes. Consistent with the adopted comple- comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yes. Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of existing build or natural landscape? Yes. Is the site or the proposed action located in, or does it join a state listed critical environmental, environmental area? No. Eight, will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at or near the site? Proposed action, yes. Are any pedestrian combinations or bicycle routes available on or near the site? No. Does the proposed action?
You sure about that? Bicycle on twenty-eight?
I don't know the route.
There's no route.
It's got the large.
It's on the opposite side of the road.
Yeah.
Don't you run, when you run a bicycle route, is it in the lane headed west?
It's, no.
So lanes, then I don't know. Then I don't know that it's. It says, this is no.
Okay.
Okay. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirement? It's not applicable. Will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply? No. Will the proposed action connect to existing water, wastewater utilities? No. Does the proposed site contain or is it staying to contiguous, contiguous, I'm sorry, to a building, archeological site or district which is listed in the national or state register of historic places? It's no.
No.
Okay. Thirteen, does any portion of the site of the proposed action or land adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies? Yes. That's regulated by a federal, state or local agency? B, would the proposed action, action physically alter and approach into an existing wetland or water body? Fourteen, identify the typical habitat that type, types that occur? Wetland, forest. Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animals? Yes. Bald eagle. It's the same as the Shandaken Inn, it's the same spot, right? Is that why?
Try to cross it, yeah.
Bald eagle again, but no nest, because nests would impact construction. Okay. Is the project site located a hundred, near a hundred year flood plain? No. Will the proposed action create storm water discharge either from point or non-point sources? Yes. If so, will storm water discharge flow to adjacent properties? No. Will storm water discharge to be direct and establish conveyance systems, runoff, storm drains? No. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities? No. That would impound water or other liquid? No. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the subject of remediate? Sorry.
Remediation.
Thank you. Ongoing or completed? No.
Can we go back to seventeen? I think the answer is no. They just.
Yeah, it was just a subdivision. I don't know why they put yes.
It's not adding any additional stormwater discharge.
Thank you.
So, that was the EAF Form one.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It doesn't necessitate two injuries. There's nothing in that that would make it easy to go further.
No.
No.
Any further comments from the board regarding this application?
Not I.
No.
Okay, then I'd like a motion to approve.
So moved.
Um, a motion to approve that, but what about the, um, the mention that during the public hearing of the, what was the, what was the fourth? I'm sorry, I just want to triple check that we.
Oh, the Schedule A.
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, if what I propose is when I, I'll bring them back, when I bring my license to be signed, I'll provide those documents that we're going to prepare for the D, which has those, uh, agreements in there. Make it a three.
Okay.
And that would be, that would be part of the completed file.
So, motion to approve.
Second.
Yes, upon inclusion of a Schedule A.
It's the roll call vote.
Yeah, it is, who made the motion? You made it? Who made, you made it?
Sam, Sam and I second.
So, I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you. Uh, Clifford Bufo?
Yes.
Art Christie?
Yes.
Joyin Cow?
Yes.
John Horn? Alan Shiner?
Yes.
Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Are we moving on to the inn now?
Yeah, Cliff recused himself. Sam Spada is the acting chair.
So at this point, further discussion with regard to Shandaken Inn and what we heard, I would just like to make the observation that, uh, it's a public road that appears to be being used legally. I think our town highways, if we intend to take a look in here, is the road properly terminated? Should there be a cul-de-sac? Uh, is there opportunities for traffic common with perhaps speed humps? But, um, it seems the road is, is a victim of the success of the Shandaken Inn, that they are using the road in a legal fashion, seems to me.
Also, uh, it's been an existing inn. I mean, so when people buy property next to a place like that, maybe when they bought it, it wasn't running or had a lot of people in it, but now it does.
And in terms of that being a town road, Eric, as you remember, how it was just asked for the holders to remove, which happened since the last meeting.
Right. So he was down there, he observed it. He had a recommendation, they fulfilled the recommendation.
I am concerned about the possible bottleneck in case of emergency vehicles not being able to have an alternate access or egress from the property. I, I, I see that as a problem because of the heavy traffic now, that probably wasn't a problem in the past.
Well, they do have a circle that they go.
On the town road?
But the entrance onto the town road. In other words, if that, if that entrance was blocked, and there was no way of getting.
At twenty-eight?
No, at the, at the entrance from golf course road.
It's very wide.
It's very wide there.
It's very wide.
And then by the inn, it's a circle, you could go right around.
Okay, so the entrance itself, I, it's hard for me to see on that map.
Oh, they actually have a whole avenue. Yeah.
So in the new plans, is there additional parking provided?
So, for each of the.
So, for each of the cabins, there is a parking spot planned, and in each of those, there's a little tee turnaround area, and I'll show you.
Right, but not, what about in the main area by the inn?
No. There is not any additional parking in, because there's additional, yes, will have their own parking.
At the cabin.
At the cabin, and there's additional room, so there's room for each vehicle and room for turnaround.
But over here, you're, are you, is there, are you losing parking here?
No. No, I don't have parking.
It's just an open field.
This driveway already exists through here, and all their parking is up in here. This gravel is what everybody's referring to over the, the railroad. That is not used for parking for the facility or anything. It's, the people are just using it to access the track, to be honest, but.
Okay.
Or to get down to the.
And where the cabins are, remember, you all asked for fire apparatus road to be wide to twenty feet in the county, that was also a recommendation on their part.
This is, this is fifteen, but we revise, this is over. We revised this twenty feet wide, and like I said, these are, you know, turnaround.
Graphically, this line represents what? This heavy black line with the.
That's the property line.
That is the property line, okay.
So this is, yeah, this is the highway.
Yeah, this.
That's the use.
That's the highway.
Got you.
Is, is that trying to be enough to pass two emergencies?
It's required, it's required.
It's required from the first permit.
Twenty feet, yeah.
Well, when they did the first redo of the Shen Deacon Inn, we made sure they had that.
Okay.
I'm fine.
All right. Just from coenforcement for this kind of a project to take a building permit, I would say you just may make sure that they have their wastewater permit and then stormwater permit from the D and D C. Before the building permits issued, but I don't know why it would, it would be contingency, but it wouldn't, shouldn't hold up a decision here.
Would they need a SWIP?
The, yeah.
Or some disturbance?
No, no, this, it's not.
So, the only way, the only agency to make a SWIP is the D P, because this property is located within the hamlet of Shen Deacon. The disturbance is still proposed under an acre, so we, it does not qualify for the general permit through the state, so.
That's not the hamlet of Big Indian?
No, the hamlet of Shen Deacon, believe it or not, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Oh, no.
That's true.
Yeah, Route forty-two and twenty-eight, that's Shen Deacon.
And it comes up as far, yeah.
There is a sign of truth, that says, to Big Indian, isn't it?
Yeah.
But that may not be anyways, but. Any further discussion?
No.
No.
Do we need to take any action further at this point?
If you're making an approval, I would just make a conditional that prior to building permit issuance, that both permits from D P and D C are placed. That's all.
Is anyone prepared to make such a motion?
I make that.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Art Christie?
Second.
Joanne Chow? You're okay?
What are we doing? Voting?
Voting.
Yes.
John Horn, sorry. Alan Shiner?
Good.
Sam Spada?
Aye.
Vivian Welton?
I'm going to vote no.
We have to know why.
I, I, I am concerned that there's only one way in, and I think that as far as the traffic on that road, I, I am believing the neighbors that it's actually becoming excessive. And that to add to it would be really being not good for the community. That, that's my feeling about that particular part of the project. I mean, the project itself, I don't see a problem. It's, it's the congestion that it's going to add to, and I would, I would suggest considering another alternative in and out of that driveway access. Because I think it would actually cause less congestion in the front, be safer for emergencies, and, and allow the people in the other side of the property better access. Because there is going to be more activity on that end as well.
I will definitely, you know, present that something more than, and I will also convey the, the neighbor's comments. I'm not sure if any of the contact with the town have a wall about issues on the town road, but, you know, we will definitely bring that to the. Thank you.
You have four votes.
You have a four, and him recusing.
I think we're done with this.
Thank you all very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clipper rejoined the meeting.
Pretty good.
Is he here?
Here. He was asleep.
When it's yours, you can go.
He was asleep back there. All right.
So next applicant is new business. This is a site plan.
This is, oh, this is Omen? Okay, this is, we're looking at the site plan for the change of use for the Phoenisha Pharmacy? Is that correct?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Lee. I've been resident of Mount Shurkers since eighteen seventy-three, so I can round across the time. Currently, we have a really beautiful wellness center pharmacy up in Tannersville. And it's a, in an old Victorian home, left side of the kitchen, which we were able to get to. And it's an old apothecary kind of feel. On channel thirteen and M P C this last week touring our facility and our plans. And, and so, we now want to expand and replicate the model of the hamlet of Phoenisha. We chose the Riggellella restaurant, the old one, and, and it's been making now for over six years. And I think it's a, it's actually in very good shape. So we think it's going to be able to be able to reflect the culture that we have and, and what we want to bring to, to the community. Again, it's a wellness center, which we do public health, this year we just did almost a thousand COVID vaccinations, we do COVID testing, and we do radio shows. So we've been doing, carrying on the same thing. We have clinical services, like mental health counseling that, that we will have, but the heart of it will be the pharmacy. Now, I'm looking at the facility, the main thing we are very, very well aware of, the firewall that needs to be constructed to separate the existing small bakery that they have there. Our construction team has been working on different ways, including using luminous studs instead of light cores. Just Rick Riggellella had, had to construct a very long, serious firewall in Rio's. So it isn't quite, and, but we will make sure that that is an extremely strong firewall, and that will be where we would have our beginning of our construction. In front of the firewall, we will have a pharmacy department, and it's all wood, no metal, and all the apothecary feel, all the cabinets out to the marble. So, and, and I think the, the, the community will be very proud of that. We're not having to reinvent this since we've done it before, so our construction team, one builds out the counters and the actual home area. And so that will be in front of firewall. We then want to take the existing two bathrooms right now and gut them into a larger one single bathroom that will have handicap accessibility for wheelchairs, for our patients and our customers. We then, there's a room right in the front of, of the restaurant that we're just going to enlarge it somewhat, and then have doors, we can make that into our clinical room for immunizations and, and counseling. So that's not much of a major work.
That's not on the bar side? You're being on the other side.
On the other side, yes, correct. The bar side is actually really in pretty good shape. We're going to be doing some of our products that we make up and there. And, and then where we have to work a little bit is on, on the back entrance. So, what we found from up in Tannersville, eighty percent of the people come in and to the back entrance and not so much the front entrance. And so, well, we need to really redo the handicap accessible ramp. We also want to make it so that it doesn't freeze up in the winter like our other one. We made a mistake of, of that, and so we'll, we'll do that, and the construction team has been looking at that very carefully. That will allow people to have access from the parking lot to come right up into the store. And, and that is it. It's, the, the rest of it's relatively cosmetic. We want to repair anything on the ceiling and perhaps put a metal ceiling in, so it brings in the apothecary feel. And the road that's been in there, well, we would rip it up, and the wood is all old, beautiful wood. So we'll try to restore that back and to its original format. So that's what we're asking to, for, for board tonight. Our construction team, with your approval, will then start to get involved more in, in for presentations for building permits. And, and we then think that if all goes well, we can be operational in late spring, if not in summer.
Will you be using the second floor?
Uh, no. What, Mike is, kind of, kind of keep it dormant at this point in time. And a separate entrance, so we're kind of separating from it. And, and in the future, I'm not sure if he is going to renovate it into rooms or not. If he does, I've asked him if I could then reserve a clinical room, and then I'd rid that out, but at this point in time, no.
Okay, because if he does, oh, I'm sorry. If he does use the second floor, he would have to fireproof the ceiling on the first floor.
Okay.
So there's no entrance from your location to the stairwell going to the second floor?
Uh, no, the, the, the entrance is separated.
It's separate.
I have to go outside.
It's outside.
Yeah, I have to go outside my entrance, it's over in the foyer, and we draw that.
But you're still going to have an entrance from the street.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. And, and the, the, the external component, I have my creative director is working on it. It's fun, it's a fun project. And if we can get this occupied again, it will trigger other vacant buildings, the other three that we have in town. And, and we're going to create about eighty-nine jobs. We'll get some movement to bring in full occupancy of all of our businesses in, in, in town, per se, but.
Would you need a handicap parking spot on the street?
Um, probably not.
Because there is one across the street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How, it would be prudent, I think they already have some in the back, I think, handicap. We, we have several up in, in Tannersville. I would prefer that we would have one for the patrons. But I think there's a lot of room back there to work, and then we do have this, the, the, in the front, brand front of the store.
Right, okay.
So, be nice to see that space occupied again. It looks like you'll be the full frontage of, of Main Street, you'll be occupied.
Yes.
And you share the common vested deal, but you have no direct access to the second floor, you have to go through the vested dealer.
Right.
Have you taken the interior development any further? I'm just, I'm curious to see how this is going to be, where, where the counters are, how it's going to be used. For example, would we be having any food or fountain service at these downers?
No, there's no, no food, and we did, we had it here to bring it out, but, uh, uh, it's a pharmacy and, and. Yeah, so there, there, our intention is not to have light snacks, but no food at all, location, like services, again, more clinical, um, in, in pharmacy. The exterior of it, we really want to make it very creative, what I would say of my creative director, where you get some really beautiful art pieces that will kind of bring it out. We're spending more time in the signage than I ever thought we would, but the signage, as you know, is really important. And if you don't, you know, the five brands of works, we, we got to make sure that people have the right feel and lighting.
So what's the bar for? The bar? That's the existing bar, right?
Yeah, the, the existing bar will be a, a second register cash out, and, but we will be using it for projects. And we'll see how it goes. We do a lot of things for kids, and our other, we have a special place for COVID testing for the kids called Bear Cove. A lot of fish tanks for the kids, everybody gets a honey stick, and, and I really want to bond with the elementary school in particular to do projects together. And the overall goal is to make this a community wellness center, and.
And we have a lot of publicity where we're going with this. Question. So, from the service retail, then you go to a, a, a specialized type of retail, but it's retail to retail?
Yes.
Not a huge change. I do think you need to calculate the number of people that are going to be in there, because I think strictly speaking, we should know what the parking impact is.
Yes.
Anything on Main Street. I mean, I think you simply have to do the math.
Right, but it's going to be less than what it was before when it was a restaurant.
It should be, I agree.
And it does have the parking in the back.
That's right. It's a, in, in your lease terms, parking that's assigned for you in the back?
You know, I, 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 we've, we've kept it open as of right now, other than that, that there are moving to be parking spaces that are available. And what I don't know is, you know, when the ramp comes, the handicap ramp, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of room to do parking there, you don't want it to be dangerous. So I, I need really to see that flow, but even if people are walking a hundred feet or fifty feet, it's not.
I encourage you to get it at the lease, and I encourage you to do the math for parking, because there's just not enough parking in Phoenisha, and wouldn't want that to be a cause for someone to give a complaint down the road. So I, I will support what you're doing.
Thank you, I will, I will do.
Because there's only one, twenty, twenty-six parking spaces on the whole Main Street.
Not a lot, in that whole, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? So the isolation's going to happen, the kitchen, the pantry?
Yeah, it'll be totally wall off.
And those will be only entered from the exterior?
Uh, from the front entrance and then the back entrance.
The kitchen, I'm thinking.
No, the kitchen. How would they access that?
Uh, they can only access from outside, not through our.
Not through your space. So you'll have this back entrance?
In petition between tenants. Yes.
It's a private.
And I, you know, it's really important, because I got to deal with the board of pharmacy, I got to deal with health departments, I got, so.
Well, yes, and you know. And you have to be secure also.
Yeah, and we'll have, you know, or.
I saw the mention of this.
It's really, because we've been, have been at this, this particular project for ten years, so we've learned a lot. I've been interested in how, come to Phoenisha and make it look smoother.
Well, it looks very nice.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for reviewing our petition.
Got that, sorry.
Well, just permit, coenforcement, building aspect, I mean, it's in a flood zone. So, we've just preliminary had some conversations, and so Rob Stanley can, they'll be need, they'll need a building permit to, and all the requirements for fire safety will have to be in place in the, in the plans to issue the permit to make sure the flyer box is correct and all that. But also the floodplain permit would also have to be simultaneous, and we talked with the C W C plan, they have funding with the project, you know, that takes a long time with C W C to fund. And so I think that they're staying away from that, and their renovation cost seems to be under value anyway, that would make you have to like raise a building, but considerably, this will also have to carry a floodplain permit that Rob would have to weigh in on what.
But for now, this is a change of use application.
Exactly.
And they can't get that other stuff without our priority.
Exactly, we can't, the building department can't afford them in terms of floodplain permits and building permits until you have your approval. My only other suggest, or hope is that everything is approved. My only other suggest, or hope is that everything is approved here in terms of the parking is determined and the signage is determined here. And lighting, you know, just exterior lighting, because what I see in the building department is that comes back down the road with us. If the sign, you know, if it's not approved here, then it's just for me reading a code book saying you have twenty-four square foot on your building. You know, it would be great to get that here, right?
Yep, we know that.
Good, good, good.
They always pick on the lighting, the signage and parking, that's...
So is that, is that in there in your plans now? Do you have any information in your plans on?
Is this the sign?
The sign, the light?
Yeah, that's kind of the overall, obviously the sign cannot be larger than the town.
Code, right.
There was a sign before, so there is a place for it.
They were at Hangee.
The lighting, I don't wanna be over the top. I live in town, so I went with the same duty. But your inputs on this is, you know, because I want you to use the store also.
Right.
But yes, we are designing it and then when we finally approve, I wanna make sure Mr. Riccadella is fine and I really want to have you present it, Sarah, for your review.
And also you have to realize that the flood plain, whatever, the library went through that whole thing too.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna make sure that everyone knows we're in a flood zone.
Yep, that we know.
Okay.
And Sarah, who's gonna review these plans? Who's the building inspector?
We don't have one for me.
Who will be to review these?
Me, I'm certified, law enforcement officer.
Like I mentioned, the only concern I have is that there's cooking facilities in the back and it's a wood framed structure.
Yeah.
So I wanna just make sure that the safety of everyone.
Yeah, you know, I'd be very more than happy when the constructing team comes up, they have to talk to Mike, their best effort, what they look and present it to Sarah.
Sure, that's right.
But there's no change of use in the back, it's been a kitchen.
No, no, it's been, yeah.
So let's proceed here, this is not the, this is not the complete application, we still need to get into...
No, we just got the idea of what they wanna do.
Okay, it's kinda like a workshop.
Yeah, because it is a change of use, this would be the sketch plan, yeah.
So sign, lighting, those are the things we'll need to see. And we're treating upstairs as vacant right now?
Vacant, yeah, right now, yeah. I mean, if Mr. Riccadella thinks that in the future he's going to develop the second floor and the third floor, then it would be best to put the fire wall on the ceiling now, instead of doing it after you're in there.
Well, I think that might turn out to be one of the requirements as you go forward.
This is the fire?
Building, the ceiling.
The ceiling of...
Well, the second floor right now is residential, so you're residential above commercial and one is a commercial kitchen. So it would have to be approved.
So the ceiling on the first floor would have to be fireproofed?
Plus the firewall in the back.
Even if it's empty, right?
It's empty, yeah, it is empty.
To avoid spray painting complaints, you have to like every ten feet put a block in.
Yeah.
And different occupancy types, you should...
Yeah, it's mixed up. Because then if down the road, if Mr. Riccadella wants to develop the second floor and make a apartment, then he doesn't have to do anything and he doesn't have to invade your space and rip out everything.
That's a little new from me, so what I'll do is work with my construction team and pass it to Sarah to give the guidance on that and then we can expense it out.
But that, would that be a contingent, I mean, that's not...
No, that would be to, that would be to his advantage.
I agree, I fully agree. I just, would that...
But should we, but are we approving, are we approving this contingent upon it not being occupied upstairs or is that irrelevant?
I would say that we're doing it on not being occupied upstairs.
Where, where on the building is the sign going?
Uh, in the front. Yes, in the front, so if I could just look at this, the artistic piece that we're working on is up here. So that it will bring it. We might see if what, how that light might look there. We wanna add a little more color to the door. But the signage would be right, right over the door.
Over the door.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, I wanted to be eloquent, eloquent. This is, when you do these projects, you wanna, you wanna have it to be all proud, it's class.
So is it everywhere?
Yes.
So I was already kinda double dipping here, this mandala is your branding and then you also have a sign in addition?
Yeah, yeah, no, that, that is, the sign is the big one, that's the one that's expensive.
I'm referring to the art piece.
No, that's up above towards the...
And it's set back as well?
Yes, it's set back, yes, it's set back, we're trying to make sure you can see it. But it will be colorful, that's the whole point, is to bring...
They're just decorating the building.
Yeah, it's decorated.
That's really not a sign.
Will you be adding lighting from what's there already?
There's nothing on it.
I don't think so. That would be a sign.
A sign has to have letters on it.
If you could show a future version of this, the sign or the elevation lights and signage, just so we have it documented.
I'll do that.
What if it's just a totem pole?
Exactly, where the sign, the need, what...
And dimension for it, they go right at the totem pole. It needs to be dark sky compliant, I'm sure you've heard that term, dark sky compliant.
Yes, yes.
Down facing, down facing lighting.
I assume you'll have signage in the windows as well?
Uh, not much, but there will be some, but not much. One of the things we are looking at is to do a drone of the whole hamlet from twenty-eight all the way through. And we spoke to an artist to kinda do a master plan of what the community would look like. I'd like to see a little park right across the street of a village green type of thing from the restaurant now. So we're looking at incorporating, so it's the whole hamlet.
Is Mike interested in doing that?
I don't know. You know, you...
You mean the hotel property?
Uh, yeah, I, you know, just, it's the notion of trying to look at, if you have loose thigh, how would you use the property? I'm well aware, you know, the restrictions of safety systems and everything else. But we can do better, it can look nicer.
Sure.
It's be, you know, and that's what we're trying to do. So, but I think we can help at least prime it a little bit with the presentation. But I'll make sure before we order the sign, that everything is exactly the way it should be. Talk to Mr. Riccadella about fireproofing the ceiling and everything else.
That's up to him, but, you know, I don't, we don't know what he has in his mind that he has to do, so that's up to him. It's not a, it's, I don't think it's a condition of this year.
Yeah.
It's outside of the demise premises, so we don't have to consider it, I think.
I mean, right, we don't have to consider it, I'm just trying to say that it would be much better for Ed that if this happens down the road, they're gonna have to tear up that whole place.
No, I, I...
Yeah, it's absolutely, that's the cheaper end for sure.
I totally understood what you said.
So it's cheaper to do it now while you're doing it, you know, and get it done.
So the reason that wasn't done in the past is because that wasn't the code at the time?
It just didn't exist.
It just didn't, yeah, it didn't exist, but we've seen it in other projects. We've seen it put it wrong and I just recently went on inspection and it would have to be redone because the second floor's residential, it's just, it's expensive to fix later on.
I mean, I don't even remember when anybody lived up there, that's how long ago it was.
Yeah.
So it had to be before code.
Well, where does, where do we go here, him coming back with the more foolproof for you all?
Well, we'd like to see the plans.
Okay.
The plans, the traffic, the parking, the occupancy inside the space.
We'd like your people to bring us, to show us what it's gonna look like.
A little of the parking and the signage.
And even the indoor, inside. What do we have it there?
We have it here in the store, I'm sorry.
Oh, you have it there, okay.
I could show you, no, um, here we have the...
Ed, is this being done by an engineer?
You know, Mike Riccadella has an engineer that I want to bring them in to explore the, the footprints that we have done by an engineer architect, a building design firm. And because they know the building, we would wanna use them. And so, yes, these were our sketch out of what we're doing, it was not, that was our...
That was just your...
Yeah, it was, I was trying to lay it out.
Right.
And there's gonna have to be calculations for path of travel and things like that.
All right.
Yeah, do we, do we need that though, for the interior stand plans?
I don't, I don't think the planning board certainly does, I think for building permit, certainly.
They won't be able to go past us without it, but...
Well, it's up to you, you can pass it on to the building inspector and say he has to have it, or he can have it himself.
Or she, our office would require stand plans for the construction of this project, absolutely, because of the fire.
You're gonna need them at some point.
That's the main problem. The main, the main concern with this whole project is the building code and the fire prevention code merged.
Right.
And this is an old building, so it has to be updated to the requirements for the fire.
I think we will from tonight, we will go forward in and have the engineer architectural firm look at the entire building and it would be wrong if we did not do the ceiling at the same time. That could absolutely correct. And then they can lay out the scale, what we're gonna be doing and then that allows us to get more meat into the handicap access ramp. So I think we will be moving, I think now's the time for us to do it. You know, you're always trying to use funds wisely and now it's time to do something.
And it looks very promising.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the timeframe now that we're working with? We're going to be addressing this at the workshop, the next meeting?
We're waiting to hear back.
We're waiting to hear back.
Yes, they gave us the information.
This is a tricky one for me in terms of this being a change of use in an existing building on Main Street. And like I'm like Phoenicia. And my trick is, as a planning board, where, what you need approved and that line stops to where we can just get into building permits. And I mean that like in the sense that just the precedent that has occurred and then where this would be now.
I think there's a little bit of overlap, kind of, because it's an existing structure.
Yes.
It's what Art and I were just saying, Detective Ruby, you know, he's gonna need stand plans anyway, just to move forward, so we could just do that now.
Yes. For a little, you don't need a stand plan on an architect to design interior design of a project that's existing and changing its occupancy?
Yes, you do.
Why? Where is it?
Because of the fire, forget, there's two things we're looking at. We're looking at the building permit.
Yeah.
And the fire.
But if you're looking at the building permit, then why, what do I do? You know, you're not...
You review. How this goes, yeah.
See, I disagree, I don't think the planning board, just planning board and the building department issues building permits.
Okay, well, let's...
We're doing a site plan approval here.
Right.
And it's a bit unspoken, but my assumption is that the change of use is going from food service, which is an allowable use, to pharmacy, which is an allowable use, so there's no special use permit here. It's just the paperwork so that we can give an approval for site plan approval and then the little part of the stuff is yours.
Exactly. I agree with you. So when he, when, in the building plan of this, the building permit to be issued in our office would require stand plans because of all of the fire, because of being residential on the second floor, being commercial on the first. But, and I'm saying this because we're gonna have more of this and I wanna know where our lines divide, the stop. Like for instance, we're gonna talk to him about his parking, but the antique store that was a pharmacy rents their parking lot out on the side, you know? Or the fly shop across the street was a restaurant. And the old building inspector, whomever was in my office, never said you have to have a change of use through the planning board. So now that we are doing this accurately, where does that line stop from what you are approving? Like to me, you're doing a site plan checklist on exterior lighting, parking, the occupancy. But when it, obviously in the construction, that's the building department.
I sort of agree with you, and that is that it, it's what you define use as. Isn't all retail the same use?
No.
Why?
Well, retail is a use, but it was a restaurant, which is different.
But that's different.
Yeah.
Okay, but if someone has a bookstore and someone else wants to come in and have a clothing store, to me, that's the same use.
Yeah, mercantile, mercantile.
So they don't have to do anything.
There's no change of use, right?
Right. Right, like exactly. But this was, in our situation, was out of use and was, or it was classified as restaurant. Now its classification is changing and it was out of use. So this is an example, we have to go for you guys, pass it.
We did ours, we did the reverse in our first shopping Woodstock. It was retail, we were going to food service, change of use, we had to submit. We gotta prove the same meaning because, you know, it's an allowable use to an allowable use, we shelved on the parking and we were over.
But Sweet Sue's is gonna open in two months and be called Sweet Sue's and didn't come here because it didn't meet all of the exact same use. Restaurant, restaurant, same name.
That used to be a furniture store.
And it would've had a change of use to come here.
It didn't come here.
Exactly.
Can I read something?
Please.
Okay. One sixteen forty-seven, one required, this is for a site plan. What is required? In accordance with one sixteen ten, District Schedule of Use Regulations, prior to the consideration of the issuance of a building permit or certificate of occupancy or use in any district, except for one, two family dwellings, except for mobile homes, including double wide homes and modulators, manufactured homes to be placed on individually owned lots and related accessory in general agricultural uses permitted by either right or special use permit, including home occupations. The zoning officer shall require the preparation of a site plan. The zoning officer shall refer the applicant to the planning board for site plan review and approval in accordance with two seventy four A of the town law and standards and procedures set forth. So this is what we've been doing since I've been on the board. Anything other than a site, anything in a single family house, multi, a modular or residential, has to come for site.
That's why this had to come to us.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying.
Had to, except where we get into the actual, that's involved with the construction, it has to go to the building department for the permit. You don't have to approve that here.
Site plan approval and building department permitting are two different things.
Right.
But here it says before, building...
But we, we need to see, we need to see accurately scaled plans.
Plans.
So we can see square footage of retail for parking and that sort of stuff.
Okay.
So we don't need to see the fire assembly.
No.
But we do need to see where the wall's gonna go.
We need to see enough to give site plan approval and actually with any town across this country.
Yeah, yeah.
And a professional's approval on that lets us know that it's actually...
And just before we close and wanna recap, I know we all saw the Festival Voice in December and here's where we are. I expect to see them in March, or there's been a violation letter sent. They are using the space without the change of use in the site plan review and there's been signs put up, they've hung signs about permits on their building and then they put signs up for their temporary use and they put cones on J Street and all of that has gone on, stopped. However, the farmer's market still continues to work out of there. And, I mean, everything's great for Main Street, but they don't have a change of use yet. They do have an architect now who's contacted the office and it's expected that they're here in March. If it's not here in March, the farmer's market, they would have to be, the owner of that building will have to be issued a summons from our office.
Okay.
You doing the right thing?
Trying.
You protecting the public safety?
Yeah, all right.
That's it. What else do we have on the agenda here?
Um, and then I got a call from Orem that they would like to submit for March and trying to submit their entire whole site plan again by February twenty-eighth to be reviewed by SLR and meet your ten day requirement before they're on an agenda.
Let her see it first. Not bring it here the same day.
No, they, at February twenty... No, they, at, at February twenty-eighth, at three P M., if it's not in my office, they are not on your March ninth agenda, and they know that.
And you're gonna get, uh, PDFs?
Yes, sir. Nothing, sir.
How are you doing?
Be honest.
Why not?
Oh, you just came to it on turf, okay.
Yes.
It's warm.
That's fine.
She's the president of the Phoenicia Business Association.
Oh, I didn't know you were the president.
Yeah?
Now I know, now I know who complains you, I thought you just went there to be a business in town.
Now you know who complains you.
Now I know who complains you.
So I understand what you're saying about that, but I still...
I'm not saying it, Lord's saying it, I just...
But it doesn't, but it depends on what you say, change of use, retail is all the same, is, a restaurant's different.
You don't want change of classification, of use classification.
Yeah, the thing is, if I, I'm selling women's clothing, and I wanna sell men's clothing, is that a change of use?
Why, the Sweet Sues becomes Happy Days, we don't care.
Before the Sweet Sues, it was a furniture store, they turned the land.
Yeah, that's wrong, I understand that, but, right, I understand that, but if someone has one kind of retail store, we don't have to go in there to, for them to have another retail store.
That's not facing us yet, on the failed to retail.
What you have to do, what you have to do on every application, first thing, very first thing, is look and see under permitted uses, and it tells you the type of business.
I got it.
Is there a motion to, uh...
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion for business.
Everybody, you wanna, aye? Yeah.
Should I, can I get a motion to adjourn?
We did that.
You got it done, vote?
Yeah, we voted already too.
Second, second, Spada, okay, Jim Spada, second motion, all in favor, five, eight, ten, and nine. Okay, twenty, we're bringing dinner next week, next week.
Bringing dinner, who's bringing pizza next time?
Now I know who complains you, so, but you should...
We're gonna have to bring...
I know she was just going back.
Never showed up, never showed up.